Cliff.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's Town Meeting for the evening of, gosh, what is today? October 7th. We kindly ask that you take a moment to silence your cell phones of any beeps, rings, or online gaming, so that everybody in the audience can hear and we can have a smooth and respectful meeting. Thank you so much for your understanding in advance. And at this time, we please invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Future meetings include the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, let me try that again, Citizens Advisory Committee meeting coming up on October 15th, which is really soon, at 7:30. I thought we moved Citizens Advisory to 7:00, did we not?
That's one of the only ones that didn't get moved, right? Commissioner Hoover?
I think that's one of the first things I did on Citizens was move the time.
I know it was discussed, but I don't remember.
Okay.
We'll verify, we'll verify.
I will verify the time, might be 7:00, stay tuned.
It'll be posted.
In the Town Office.
7:00.
7:00, thank you. Board of Commissioners meeting, October 22nd, 7:00 PM, in the Town Office and on Zoom. Planning Commission meeting, October 28th, 7:00 PM, here in the Town Office and on Zoom. And also Board of Commissioners meeting, November 4th, 7:00 PM, Town Office and on Zoom. Commissioners, are there any other meetings that I am forgetting to announce at this time? All right, hearing none, moving on. Looking at our minutes. We have two different sets of minutes. First, from September 9th, and also from September 24th. Do you want Commissioners to take those together to approve them? Or would you like to take those separately?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 9th, 2024, and September 24th, 2024? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0. Next up is the Please Report.
Evening, I'm Deputy Bartholomew. And I got the September 2024 Please Report. So for leave, two days of holiday annual, sick 14, that being pretty much all my, the finish of my paternity leave that was out on, of the staffing, I returned on the 26th. Training and special assignments, had Hanukkah with, he assisted in Middletown Heritage Days, and then both of us had some online training for our annual in-service. And I think you guys got, is this new this month, or was it last month? I'm not sure, as far as more in detail about our calls for service and stuff. Kind of want to explain that. All the traffic statistics, that's going to be just your community deputies. Same with the arrest statistics. And proactive, the calls for service, that's going to be the whole town, whether we handled it or our normal patrol operations handled it. And then traffic statistics are us, except for the crashes, that's going to be all the crashes throughout the whole town, even if patrol handled it. So this is pretty much just Hanukkah, because even though we did have some additional help, it's kind of hard to pull the statistics for, because our temporary guys weren't technically in the unit. So for September, we had seven warnings, seven crashes, one selective enforcement, walking patrols, two, eight talks, 20 school safety checks. And then you can see we had 10 disturbances, one theft, four suspicious, five noise complaints, and one assault, which obviously brings our year-to-date up. Any questions on anything there?
Did you say the calls for service are for all deputies?
Um, yeah, the whole calls for service section, that yeah, that's going to be for all of Emmitsburg, whether we handled it or patrol operations handled it. Yep.
Um, I don't have a question, but I noticed on one of the town posts where the town was seeking feedback on where to put the speed trailers that light up if you speed, there seemed to be a lot of public comment as far as speeding on North and South Seton especially.
Okay.
Also, Silo Hill Main Road was mentioned, 140 going out towards Waynesboro was mentioned, but overwhelmingly, there was a lot of people concerned about speeding on,
On Seton?
On, North and South Seton.
Okay.
And especially, we did have a comment from a woman who, a lady who I think walks her children to school, and there's a section of South Seton without a sidewalk. So, and she said that speed is often an issue. So that might be something just to keep in mind.
If you have any emails, if you can pass them one to us, I can kind of narrow down like maybe times and stuff like that as well.
Sure.
Also, yeah, I know it's, they're having a lot of those tree plantings coming up.
Yeah.
With, what's the company?
Streamlink.
Streamlink, out here, and they're going to have a lot of foot traffic walking across. We're going to be assisting for a lot of them, but I think the speed trailer might help there with slowing down traffic and make it easier for them for the next coming months as well.
Right, I know, and it can get tricky right there by the library in front of the Town Office where we have that crosswalk.
Right.
Because if you're in the crosswalk and somebody stops, someone can still go around.
Right.
And hit you, so that's a very dangerous place for pedestrians. So, thank you for your diligence in that area, I appreciate it, and welcome back from paternity leave.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving down, next to the Town Managers' Report.
Good evening, this is the Town Manager's Report for August. I'll just highlight some key areas related to streets. Staff continues to work with, or work with several contractors on paving projects throughout town. They also repaired some manhole and water valve box lids on Timber Mill Run and Silo Hill. Cold patched some potholes around town as well. Related to parks. Staff dug up and lowered curb boxes in front of the Eugene Myers Park restroom building. They also assisted with National Night Out, and they pulled weeds, weed killed, and put mulch around all the park entrance signs. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 518,000 gallons per day and consumed 292,319, which meant 43.57% of the wastewater treated was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, however, we were over the plant design capacity seven days in the month of August. Most of that was due to the amount of precipitation, which we received 5.8 inches in August with total of eight rain days. At the time of this report, we had a surplus of precipitation of 2.23 inches over the last six months. Related to water, Rainbow Lake at the time of this report was four inches below the spillway at 16.2 feet, however, as of today, it's 16.6 feet, and it's actually flowing over the spillway. And then listed are your well depths. And then water production and consumption, we produced an average of 292,497 gallons and consumed an average of 292,319, which meant the amount of backwash in the month of August was roughly 10.62%. Trash will remain on Mondays throughout the month of October. I highlighted some of the meetings that I attended in August. Some noteworthy items, the new water and sewer hire started and is doing very well. They're extremely pleased with his performance. The contractor is finishing up the backwash project at the water treatment plant, that should be wrapping up soon. Staff continues to work with the consultant on the lead line service inventory. The report is due to MDE, I believe, the second or third week of October. We've been collaborating with some different companies, exploring options for a water meter upgrade project. The staff flushed the sewer line at the pool every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in the month of August. We are just waiting to get on the schedule to get that sewer line repaired. And then the town received a $30,000 grant from MDE for its E&amp;R performance, the operations and management at the wastewater treatment plant. And then the contractor is up at Rainbow Lake, working on the pump house bridge replacement. The old bridge is down, and it should be installed, the new bridge should be installed by the end of the week.
Okay.
And that is my manager's report.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Sweeney?
I just have one thing, the, town staff did a nice job getting the fields ready for the, for the kids for the tournament this weekend. But the one field, field four needs rolled. We couldn't play on it because it was too, you sunk off six inches to a foot when you walked on it.
Too wet.
It's because it's been rotated till, it just needs rolled so to get solid again, if you can have them do that. Because they had to send six teams to Green Castle to play, because we couldn't use that field.
It was a lot of rain leading up to that tournament.
And it just soaked it all up into big spots. But the kids' tournament went really well, we had a couple hundred kids playing on both sides of the fields, I mean, both parks, so it went really well. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Turnquist?
I wanted to ask about the water meter upgrade project. Is that different than the water meters that we've been replacing over the last several years?
Yeah, they would be different. There's new systems out there for your water meters that, they're read in-house, so currently now staff drives by and takes some readings, and actually has to get out and take some readings. The systems will automatically read them, it's automatically entered into our billing system, and then you, as a homeowner, would have access to that, so you can see your usage. So instead of waiting, so say you get a leak on day two of that billing cycle, and your bill doesn't come out, and we don't read the meters for, you know, 80 days, and your bill comes out, and it leaked for then 80 days. You've got excessive water use. This would alert the town that, hey, this place has an enormous amount of water being used, and then we can notify the homeowner, the homeowner can be notified, and this company then, they manage it all too. And then they respond to complaints and things like that. But it's just options we're exploring right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on, thank you, Ms. Willis. Okay, on to the Grant Administrative Report. Michelle?
Hi, good evening. I will just highlight a few things from my report that starts on page 26 in the Agenda Packet. So like, two grants were closed out this month. One was for the new parking meters on Main Street, and then the other one was for the advertising for Emmitsburg as a tourist destination. And then for kind of noteworthy items of my 16 active grants, pretty much everything's on schedule for my projects. The bathroom concession stand building is expected to be delivered this month on the 21st, and we're going to have a pre-meeting before that to make sure everything's in order for the delivery of that building. For the Clarifier, which is Grant 22-16, there's a change order coming before the board tonight, that's Agenda Item Number 7. On the next page, page 27. Grant 23-19. For North Seaton Avenue Waterline, we did get the design plans from our engineer for that, and we've had a couple meetings going over the design. And so we're just waiting to finalize that now with the engineer before we put that off the bid. For 24-4, for the premier pump station, there could be a delay in the completion of the project, which would push the date to February 14th of next year. And if that's the case, there will be a change order coming to the board, possibly at the October 21st meeting. More information on that will come. I think that's the most noteworthy items, and then on page 29, I added, to kind of go along with Kathy's reports and the Jill's report, the meetings I attended for the month also. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Town Operations Specialist Report.
Hi. All right, so just a couple things that we've been working on. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so thank you all, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners and all the staff for wearing our shirts. And we have about 14 businesses included in our raffle, so I think we're going to meet our goal, if not exceed it, for first year, our goal was to raise $2,000 to donate. We're well on our way, and decorations around town will be going up this week. We couldn't last week because of the rain. And, let's see, we're working on the turkey trot already with Commissioner O'Donnell, that's pretty much handled. And we're working, Commissioner O'Donnell and I, with a mount for the disc golf league that they want to get implemented. Hopefully in the spring, they're going to start utilizing more of our park services. And, let's see, today, Najila and I gave a tour for the Maryland Main Street Program. Several other members signed up to tour the town, we gave that today, went very well. They were really impressed with all of our work with the grants, so shout out to Maddie. They were very, very impressed with all the work, the grants and how we use the money. The streetlights, the bricks, the clock, everything. So that was, excuse me, the general consensus, they were quite impressed. And for September, first time the town participated in the National POW MIA Recognition Day. We set up a missing man table right on Main Street, that went well received. Got a lot of good, good comments, feedback on that. And just working right along on the other items, Carriage House Christmas, the welcome packet for new residents, the farmer's market, and the emergency preparedness plan. So that's all, still ongoing. Any questions, anything?
Questions?
If you want to meet with the Lions Club, it's the second.
Yes. I spoke to Diane, I'm going to be there this month, I can't, next month I will. And did you get the picture?
Yes.
That was pretty great.
Yeah.
Right? And, but again, thank you everybody for wearing the shirts, it's a good cause.
Thank you for all the effort you and the town staff into all of these projects, including breast cancer awareness and showing our support through the shirts and the town decorations and raising money through the raffles. And also, the POW MIA Recognition Day was beautiful.
It really, and a lot of the, well, several of the town businesses helped. I forgot the glass, went to Palms, they gave a glass, and Carriage House gave the, or donate, or let us use tablecloths. So was a joint effort, it really was, it was good.
It was very nice, very touching, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the Town Planners' Reports.
Good evening, this is the Town Plan Support. I've listed the number of, or number of zoning inquiries that we got last month. And then processed seven zoning permits for development updates. Emmitsburg Distillery, they, we received updated improvement plans from them. They have a smaller building footprint now, from 28,000 square feet to 27,803 square feet, thousand square feet, no, 27,803 square feet, anyways. And for Emmett Ridge, the developer has been provided with the adequate public facilities ordinance application and HOA information, so it looks like they're moving, moving forward. For the St. Joseph Church ADA ramp, we helped the developer coordinate his project with the DePaul Street water line replacement project. And plans for the North Seaton Avenue of Green Street were reviewed by the planning department and the project town engineer, and the project engineer has a lot of comments to address. For development pipeline, we had some interest in Fairleigh Farm, but that's, that's just an interest, we'll be presenting a concept plan at some point. And for stormwater management, we're working on the annual reporting to that, to be submitted this month, at the end of this month. Sheep planting project, planting did take place today. Will be taking place in other dates in October, November, and December. And the stormwater utility fee was sent out with the water bills, along with an article explaining the fee. For, I'll leave the planning commission for, yeah, Commissioner Turnquist, if that's okay.
Okay.
And then for comprehensive plan, some of that progress will be presented tonight. We've been working on the maps and charts and graphics, and then incorporating public input and the planning commission's comments, and there's been sections added regarding goals and strategies. And for grants, progress reports were submitted for the IIHA and Community Legacy Grants. And I've listed a bunch of meetings that I've attended during the month of September.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
I have one.
Yes?
The Silo Hill Plaza. What does that consist of? Project wise?
It started out as a liquor store at the bottom, and then, sorry, hustles on top, but then they, yeah, I won't tell, yeah, but now it's just going to be a liquor store, but that project hasn't, there's no traction there as of right now, so.
There's no traction, so the county extended the grade in.
Yeah.
I guess it's been a while back or something, or.
Right.
So it's not a new, not a really new update.
No.
All right, I'll get with you later on that then, try and figure out what it is. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on, thank you. Commissioner, comments? Starting with Commissioner O'Donnell.
Can I ask for the luxury of going later?
You may, absolutely. Commissioner Turnquist?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and voted, and congratulate our new Commissioners, and also, and our returning Commissioners.
And give a big heartfelt thanks to Commissioner O'Donnell for all you've done, your many, many years of service, and your commitment to improving this town always, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yeah, I agree too, thanks, Tim, for all the help you did with the parks and the mountain bike trails and everything. We wouldn't have most of the stuff here if it wouldn't have been for you. But your help.
I'm not dying. I appreciate these sentiments. Thank you, sir.
And thanks for everybody for coming out and voting, and don't forget Halloween is this month, it'll be Halloween itself, the 31st. It'll be at the Fair Hall on the Square, so please come out and trick or treat, and we have a parade and everything going on. So come out, enjoy yourselves, bring your children, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover?
Also want to thank Commissioner O'Donnell for his time being here for many years. I spoke to you last minute, I guess it was, a little bit, but I do remember when you came here, you first got involved in the meetings and attended meetings, and ran for office and was successful, obviously. And been here for quite a long time, and appreciate the service you have done, path that you created and started, and moved on, so wish you the best, and I'll see that you'll be on other committees, and I appreciate that, and so, thank you for all your service, thank you.
I can go first, and then I'll leave it to you.
I'll go, so the President doesn't have to go.
I can, because I wanted to piggyback on what everybody else was saying. Right, okay, so it's my turn now. So Commissioner O'Donnell, I wanted to extend my deepest gratitude to you for your many, many years of service, not just as a council member, but on various committee members and your passion for the trails and the parks. Your commitment has made a lasting impact on our town, on our community, and it's felt everywhere we go. So I wanted to thank you for everything you have done, and I know you're not dying, but I am looking forward to your continued participation in the town with the various, with parks and such, so thank you, and obviously wishing you all the best in your future endeavors, and so thank you. And I'm not done yet. But I wanted to leave with that, because it kind of went along with everybody else. Also, I received an email from regarding how Emmitsburg could apply to be a Bird City, which goes in line with us being a tree city, and a lot of the things that we're doing already for Bird City would, are things that we're doing for our, in April for Earth Day, for example. It's something that I would love to see maybe thrown to Parks and Rec at some point to pursue, because it's an easy enough application, it's a feather in our cap, and the activities that need to be done, I'd be absolutely willing to volunteer and help on that end. Next, regarding the Emmitsburg News Journal, there was, you know, obviously, some concerns in one of the articles about our electronic vehicle charging stations where residents are concerned that the town's using tax dollars to pay for electricity to charge private vehicles. We did leave it at the end of that night that we wanted to potentially look at how much we're spending on that, and what are the options if we were to implement a credit card payment onto those stations? So that's something I would like to ask the town to provide us additional information on moving forward, so that we can bring it back and continue the discussion. Also, congrats to everybody who ran and who are returning and who are newly elected, and thank you for everybody who came out to vote and continued to do so. With that, Commissioner O'Donnell, I'm done, and I yield to you.
Bird City, feather in our cap, saw what you did there.
Ah, but I'm bummed, I didn't even notice.
Okay, I'll be succinct. It has been an honor to serve. Choked up. I'm very grateful for the support that I've had from my wife and from my family. Choked up, but I'll get past it. So here we go, I went to a very rigid high school, if we choked, we would just not be socially accepted, so I can't choke anymore, bear with me. Okay, to the board, I'll give you the ministers, the priest's advice to the married couples. Support one another, okay? Collaborate, don't compete when you don't have to, always make each other look good. For the community, this new board will look at the water and sewer rates, support them, give them your feedback. In my opinion, growth is necessary here, and it will occur whether we choose to see it happen or not. So it is in our best interest to prepare rigorously for it and really dictate what we want to see growth-wise in our community. We have a very strong hand there, and it's very important that our government really looks at that seriously, as it has been and as it has done in the past. Not a criticism, just a hope for the future, quite honestly. The North County Regional Park is something that will be developed in the very near future. It will, in a way, compete with what we offer, but hopefully it will complement what we offer. There will be hearings in the near future, I believe. So my hope is that not only will committee members be there, but board members will be there too, after getting feedback from the community as to what we would like to see collectively. To that end, I harp on this, pedestrian safety. Our young kids are bold, independent, and will ride their bikes over Route 15 if we don't give them a path to ride to that park. So please, 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 fight to get a path connecting us to that future park. It is a moral imperative. People on the highway will die also, avoiding our kids on their bicycles and walking over there. So it is super important that we find a route, and we commit to that route. It will be expensive, but, you know, put a price on someone's grandson or granddaughter or child, you know, daughter or son. Let's get these things well done. Again, thank you to my family, to my wife and to my children. Treat the staff well, board. They are gold, and if we lose them, we will pay more gold, so just an opinion there. Finally, Mr. Mayor, I want to address a couple quick things. You wrote a very kind thing in the newspapers, thank you. None of what I've done is alone, none of it. So, not to correct you, but just to say, it's always been collaborative, and I'm grateful. One other point, again, Mr. Mayor, this is for you. I did not enter the NIL transfer portal, I'm not going to throw my, to be a Commissioner, I want you to know that. I'm going to stay in town, just for the record, and with that, thank you, goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Turning to Mayor comments.
Okay, I'll try to be real quick. Bird City, I think we already did that, because the trees in front of my house are full of birds for some reason, it's here. And I don't know where they've came from, but we've never had that before. So I think we were well on our way there.
And I don't know where they've came from, but we've never had that before. So I think we were well on our way there. Stop by the food bank today. They are getting more customers than ever. And their their funds are running a little low. They're starting to get some donations in, but. Their their financial funding is running a little low, so if anyone has any, there belongs to any organizations that wants to make a donation to the food bank. They could use that. Last Thursday, I met with the Frederick County School Board Construction Committee. And was able to give a little spiel on how I feel that our elementary school has been neglected. Since back in the seventies, there was only three things that have been done to that school since nineteen seventy two, and that's a new roof, a new gym floor. And a new air conditioning unit. Most of their furniture is hand me downs from other schools that have closed and they acknowledged all that. Now, are they going to do anything about it? I don't know. But it was a good group of people, was made up of some of the state senators and state representatives. Along with a few members of the school board, so. They said we're on the radar. Because I stressed the safety, our school, who if anybody hasn't been in that school, it is an open room school. So if they would get an intruder into the school, there's no way to lock it down. There's only three schools left like that here, Middletown and Walkersville. And my big concern is our resident deputy is going to be up here a long time by himself waiting for backup. If something would happen at our school to where Middletown, Walkersville is kind of surrounded by police and they. They acknowledged that, so maybe we'll get moved up on the list to get something done there. Emergency preparedness, we're going to jump on that a lot quicker than we thought, just by what happened in North Carolina last weekend, you know. Little town that sits up on the side of the mountains are no longer there. We have the same. Opportunity for that to happen here. And we're going to review those plans very quickly and very seriously. And get some plans into place and we're going to be asking for community help with that. And. Commissioner Donald, you're going to be busier than you've ever been because we we have a plan for you, but thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're moving on to public comments. I do want to differentiate. Since we are holding a public hearing tonight. That if you are here to speak regarding that agenda item for the public hearing, you have the option to save your comment for that time. If it's not regarding the public hearing and you want to get up and speak in general, this would be the time to do so. We do have three people signed up. It looks like. Suzy Glass, you're signed up for, where are you? Rental properties? Do you want to wait for public hearing? Oh, general things. Okay. Alright, so I'll just pause just for a second. Diane Walbacher, did you want to come for?
I'll wait for.
Wait, okay. And Carrie, where is Carrie? Okay. Do you want to wait for public hearing? Okay, thank you. So. You may go ahead and turn on.
I'm sorry, kind of jumped right up there. I was going to raise my hand and just interrupt, but I just want to talk about the voting.
I'm going to pause you just for a second. If you could state your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forget. My name's Susan Glass. I live two thirty nine North Seaton Avenue, right next to Commissioner Sweeney there. And I'm one of the owners of the Odd House. I just came to say something about the town election. I forgot. So I would like to know next year, could we post some signs around town that says vote today? There were little signs for people that were voting, but you know, everybody's so busy and I'd send something to someone else and they're like, oh, my lord, they had forgotten too. But even if you put little signs on the square, just something that reminds people today's, we used to have signs around, I would say today's the day. And the town office used to be up there, so there'd be a big sign that, you know, town election today, so. And I'm getting older, but I forgot. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the others two, we're going to wait for public hearing, so that concludes public comments. Okay, administrative business, we have none, so we're moving on to consent agenda. Our first consent agenda. For consideration, accept the resignation resignation of Brian McKenney as an alternate for the Board of Appeals. Just as a recommendation in the future, should we move that up to administrative since whether or not we vote? Yes or no, he's resigned, right? So should that be more of an administrative business item? It can be either one.
Administrative.
Administrative, okay. But since it's under consent agenda. I mean, what if we vote no? Does he have to stay? That's my point.
Well, so you still vote under consent. You just don't have any discussion. So you still vote under consent, just no discussion.
Alright, so. Consent agenda. I'm sorry, I need my reading glasses.
Can we vote for the first three together?
Which is resignation of Brian McKenney. For consideration, appoint Tim O'Donnell to Parks and Recreation Committee. With a term of October seventh, twenty twenty four to October seventh, twenty twenty six. And for consideration, appoint Tim O'Donnell to the Planning Commission as a full member with the term of October seventh, twenty twenty four to July eleventh. Twenty twenty seven. Can we take those three together? I am fine with that. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda, consent agenda items one, two and three. For approval.
Second, okay. All in favor, please say aye. Say against?
Politely abstain.
Politely abstain, so motion passes for. With one of. Four zero one. Okay, next one, for consideration, proclamation declaring October twenty twenty four breast cancer awareness month. So. Make it to the proclamation. Okay, proclamation, breast cancer awareness month, October twenty twenty four. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, per the American Cancer Society. About three hundred ten thousand, seven hundred twenty new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women in twenty twenty four. And whereas this year, an estimated forty two thousand, two hundred and fifty women will die from breast cancer in the United States. And whereas one in eight women will develop breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas there are over four million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and educate all citizens about its risk factors. Detection and treatment. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness. We also support those who courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October twenty twenty four, we recognize that breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their family and friends. Who are a tireless source of love and encouragement and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers. Working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas breast cancer awareness month is an opportunity to unite all citizens. In our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the board of commissioners in the town of Emmonsburg, Maryland. Do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty four as breast cancer awareness month. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation?
Make a motion to accept proclamation for breast cancer awareness month, October two thousand twenty four.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes five to zero. And moving on to our next proclamation. For consideration, proclamation honoring Commissioner Timothy J. O'Donnell. Commissioner or Mayor Davis, would you like to?
Sure. Let it hereby be known on the occasion of this recognition of services, the seventh day of October, twenty twenty four. The town of Emmonsburg hereby extends its sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Timothy J. O'Donnell. For his dedicated services as a commissioner liaison to numerous committees and most notably as president of the Board of Commissioners. The town thanks Mr. O'Donnell for his leadership and commitment that has significantly contributed to the progress and well being. Of our community from the years two thousand nine to twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Mr. O'Donnell, did you say aye?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of have to.
So that is. Thank you. Motion passes. For an approval and one abstaining. So at this time, I believe Commissioner O'Donnell, we have. The mayor. For you, if you could please step forward. Okay, thank you again, Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the treasurer's report.
So the cash balance as of September first, twenty twenty four for the entire town. Nine million, four hundred and five thousand. We had deposits totaling one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred. Withdrawals, nine hundred and eighty two thousand, six hundred and six dollars. With an operating balance forward of eight million, five hundred and sixty two thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. Top ten checks are there in the middle of the page. And then the fund breakdown as of September the twenty sixth. Our general fund, we have just over two million. Our capital projects fund, six hundred and ninety four thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine dollars. Our water fund, one hundred and nineteen thousand and change. ARPA, two point six million available. Our sewer fund is just over three million. For a total of eight million, five hundred and fifty two thousand, four hundred and ninety seven dollars. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No. Okay. And that, then we're moving on to the planning commission report.
So the planning commission met on September tenth to discuss the proposed text amendment for student housing. Which will be before the board this evening. And we met on September thirtieth to discuss the comprehensive plan. We reviewed chapters four, five and six. And we looked at goals and strategies on how we wanted to move forward. Which I think you will all be impressed with. They're fantastic. Our next planning commission meeting is October the twenty eighth. Seven P M.
Okay, any questions, comments? Nope, hearing none. Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. We're moving on to our agenda items. Number one, swearing in of new commissioners. And for that, I turn to you, Mayor Davis.
Okay, raise your right hand and where I use my name, you use yours, please. I Frank Davis. Do affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland. And support the constitution and laws thereof. And that I will, to the best of my skills and judgment. Diligently and faithfully. Without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of commissioner of the town of Emmonsburg, Maryland. According to the constitution and laws of this state. And the charter and code of the town of Emmonsburg, Maryland. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
We're losing everybody. Ninety nine, yes, channel ninety nine is currently down. The town has a meeting with them tomorrow to get it back up and running.
And I think I'm done for the night. I'm good.
Welcome, Commissioner Hagan. Okay, are we ready to move on? Alright, okay. Alright, moving. On for agenda item number two, for consideration, reorganization of the Board of Commissioners. So at this point, we're going to, after each election, we reorganize the board and determine. Roles for president, vice president, treasurer, and also liaisons to different committees such as Parks and Rec. Citizens Advisory and Planning Commission. So at this point, are there any comments? Nominations?
I have a nomination. I would nominate Amy remain president and make a motion that. We vote for Amy as president for another year.
Oh, well, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. So is that a second?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, we can, are we doing this one at a time? Okay, so all in, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you very much. For vice president, I would like to nominate Jim Hoover. You're like, your background information. Has been valuable as I learn this role, which is huge. I had big shoes to fill and I'm still trying to fill them. And I know Commissioner O'Donnell doesn't want me to talk about him anymore, so we'll move on. But I do nominate. Commissioner Hoover for VP.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
I was going to ask that to be placed on planning zoning.
To be on.
As a liaison.
Oh, to be on the planning commission?
Either or, I can do both. But I would like to, I would like planning commission.
I I would second. I, I would second your role on Planning Commission. Given your knowledge and background. Any? Discussion, comments?
I have no problem with it.
No? Okay, all, so we have a motion on the table for Jim. Commissioner Hoover as Vice President and also for the Planning Commission. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any against? Any abstain? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Then we have Treasurer. And Citizens Advisory. And Parks and Rec.
If you'll have me, I'd like to remain as Treasurer.
Okay. I second that.
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, comments? No, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Hagan, did you say?
Nah, nothing on that.
Huh?
Nothing on.
Oh, no, did you say aye, though? Or, okay, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, motion carries five to zero. And then we have two left, Citizens Advisory and Parks and Rec.
I'd like to do Citizens Advisory.
Okay.
And I would like to do Parks and Rec.
I second.
I second both.
I second both. Any questions, comments, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. That was a quick reorg. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Initial Presentation of the Comprehensive Plan.
Hi. So the document you've received. A link to, you know, agenda packet. Has multiple sections of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. This document is meant to include a community's, this community's vision and goals for its physical, social, economic, and environmental development. It's meant to serve as a blueprint for guiding future growth. Oh, okay, development and land use within this jurisdiction. So the state of Maryland has a requirement for municipalities to update their comprehensive plan every 10 years. And the last comprehensive plan update took place in 2015, so. It's time to update it as we're coming towards the 10-year mark. And the plan is meant to guide the town through the year 2040. So what you've received includes six different sections of the plan. It starts out with an overview of the community's input and vision. And then it goes on to the sections addressing population, housing, economic development, economic development, environment, and natural resources. Land use and community design. And these chapters have a set of goals, objectives, and strategies related to each other. Each of those topics to help guide the community's vision for the town's future. So, for example, the population and housing section looks at current characteristics of the town's population and housing. And then provides goals, objectives, and strategies related to these. So one example of a goal is to accommodate the population needs by offering diverse housing options to cater to all ages, groups, and income levels. And then there are three objectives for each, for that goal, and a strategy to go with each objective. So for increasing diversity. There was a strategy for that would be to revise the zoning regulations to allow for greater housing diversity. So. So all the chapters have goals and strategies and objectives and strategies that go with them. And the remaining chapters include transportation, community facilities, municipal growth. And implementation. We're still working through those sections and finalizing the ones that were presented tonight for this meeting.
Okay. Um. I did not print this out, and I did not bring my computer. I was under the impression we were going to get a copy, but I know that that was lengthy to print out. So since I don't have it in front of me to reference. Can you give us a little bit more detail as far as the main changes that have been made since our last comp plan? Just other than diverse housing options. We heard that one, but is there anything? Else that are main changes that you would like to highlight at this time? Because I was expecting a little bit. More. Okay, sorry.
That's my fault. I told her just to keep it short as a, just a quite quick overview, and then would go over it next meeting.
Okay, so next meeting? Okay, so next meeting is more in more detail?
Yeah, that was kind of our goal to hand it out so everybody could read it and.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Get some more information and then go really dive into it at the November 4th Town Meeting.
Okay.
So it's kind of my fault that she kept it short.
Okay, thank you. And can I request a copy? Thank you. Okay. For everybody. All right.
Would everybody like a copy? Okay, we'll go ahead and print them out and put them on your desk.
Yes, thank you very much. That was just the initial presentation. I don't think there's any vote needed on that. Okay.
Is this on our website?
The initial?
Yeah, will this be put out?
The draft, yeah, the draft's already out there for comment.
I encourage everybody get on there and look at it. Because it's, it's what's planned for the next 40 years. Or 20 years, I guess, 20 years till 2040. So please get on there. The, the people worked very, very hard on this. DeJulia put a lot of time into it, and we had. A small group of citizens that committed a lot of time. And so, so please get on there and look at it and get us your, your feedback.
Thank you. We, the rest of our comments are for the public hearing. Yeah, so, okay. But as far as that goes. Is there also, when you posted to the website, a way to summarize some of the major changes?
We can do that.
Yeah, thank you. Just like look in these areas for these.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you. Cliff Notes version of it, so to speak. All right, page or Agenda Item Number Four. Moving on. Actually, any other questions or comments regarding the initial presentation of the comp plan? Commissioner Hagan?
I just want to second Mayor Davis's comments. We've spent the last year. Doing a lot of changes with citizen feedback in there and addressing some of the things we tried as the Planning Commission to really address our. Concerns of 55% of our population. At the A cap line or lower, and that's our diverse housing comments and everything in there. So we try to address that, but. We need to hear from more people coming out and saying something.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments regarding the comprehensive plan? Okay, all right, thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, hold a public hearing. And consideration of amendment to Chapter 27. Do I have to read all the different? Is Chapter 27 sufficient?
Chapter 17.
Sorry about that. Let's go back to Chapter 17. To the Town Code to allow and establish requirements for student housing in the Village District. So, since this is a public hearing. At this time. The public hearing shall commence. Where did Ms. Willis go? Usually I ask Ms. Willis, has the hearing been properly advertised? Town staff, yes?
It has, yeah.
And where has it been advertised, just for the record?
So Friday news post, right, Darina, and then, and the Time website, and Facebook, and I didn't. And newsletters, yeah.
And newsletters, all right, thank you. If anyone intends to provide testimony during public hearing, please stand if you're able. If not. Well, stand and raise your right hand. Or if you're not able to, just raise your right hand to give the following oath. Right? All right. Do you solemnly swear to or affirm under penalties of perjury? That the response given and the statements made by you in these proceedings will be the whole truth. And nothing but the truth, and if so, state I do. Thank you. You are now sworn in. All right, turning it over to. Somebody at the town for a brief overview.
Okay.
DeJulia?
Yeah, sure. So as you mentioned, the purpose of this text amendment is to formally establish regulations for student housing in the Village Zone District. The proposal was prompted by. Some violations at a property located in the Village Zone where a multifamily house was being used as student housing. So some more background, the property owner, Mr. Ott. For 101, 105 West Main Street, submitted a zoning permit application for a multifamily dwelling units in 2022 for rent to single families. And that building was renovated to two dwelling units. So after multiple complaints and residents, from residents regarding parking and trash, it had come to the town's, town staff's attention that. Mr. Ott was renting the units out to students, which isn't an allowable use in the Village Zone. And also he had the students moved in prior to obtaining an occupancy permit from the town. So in order to respond to the complaints from the surrounding town residents regarding parking and trash, a letter was sent to Mr. Ott. To correct his violations with the warning that his zoning permits would be revoked. But he continued to rent to students. After the town sent him citations, Mr. Ott's attorney and the town attorney met. And it was decided that the applicant can, can only rent to families as their single family dwelling units. Or apply for a text amendment to make student housing an allowable use. So it's important to note that student housing differs from boarding and rooming houses because of their intended purpose and occupancy. And student housing requires special considerations because of the transient nature of its younger tenants and potential impacts on. To surrounding neighborhoods due to issues like parking, trash, noise, density, et cetera. So it's important to codify student housing so that there's zoning and land use clarity. It, you know, mitigates any neighborhood impacts. It'll help enforce parking and trash requirements and kind of help with overall long-term planning. So in order to codify student housing, several parts of Chapter 17 of the Town Code. Have been modified or proposed to be modified. The definition of student housing has been added to Section 17.04.020. And it has been specified that boarding and rooming houses should not be used as, as student housing, student housing. Definition of family boarding house and rooming house have been modified. Student housing has been added to Section 17.36.020 as a permitted use in the Village Zone. And off-street parking requirements have been added to. 17.36, 17.36.040 as well. So that's, those are the main changes that are being proposed.
Are the changes being proposed by the town, or?
This is a mix, because during the Planning Commission. Meeting, we looked at some of the definitions and. Thought that they could use some modifications, and so with respect to those, those are coming forth from the Planning Commission. And the student housing request is coming forth from Ms. Ott, and I'd like to add that. There was a fair amount of discussion about the impact of displacing students in the middle of a term. And so out of deference to. The student residents and Mount St. Mary's. The decision was taken that, well, we need to move toward a resolution of this matter. And if you choose to submit a text amendment, we could certainly consider it, so we don't wind up with a precipitous eviction of students with nowhere to go. Because there is a housing issue on campus.
So from what I'm hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong, are you? Does the decision need to be voted on tonight?
The decision whether or not to adopt a zoning text amendment? If a decision is not taken. It will have to be re-advertised, and I would also point out to the board that. If it's the board's determination to make material modifications to the text amendment. Then it would also have to be re-advertised, because you can't send, you know, you can't do a bait and switch, for example. So those are the two things that you should consider. Although I guess you could continue the hearing. If that's how you chose to proceed without a further publication, but that, but.
There's a, there's a distinction.
Understood.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, so. Do we have a representative from the Otts who will be speaking? I'm gonna have you pause until you get your microphone on.
Hi. My name is Brandy Peoples. I am the attorney for Mr. Ott. Mr. Ott is standing directly behind me. We were here last month in front of the Planning Commission and gave. Extensive information and testimony concerning. The student housing amendment, and, and the thing I'd like to point out to this board and to the mayor. Is that this has been going on, and it's still going on all through Emmitsburg. This is, the student housing thing is not a new thing. This is just arisen as a result of complaints related to this one particular house. But if you look in apartments.com, if you look at Zillow, if you look at all these other real estate advertisements. You're going to see, and prior to the last hearing, I found three of them. Where there are houses that are being advertised with one rental price, but to be divided amongst students. So this is something that has been happening. For a very long time. What we decided to do in coming to the board before this text amendment, and, and to give you a little bit of history. The Emmitsburg Code, and, and, and I say this also as. I'm town council for Middletown in Woodsboro, and it's a problem that kind of is arising in a lot of municipalities because. The codes haven't adapted with the times. There was a really bad Supreme Court decision that really went to. Codifying what a family is and who can rent certain housing, and if you're related. How many unrelated people can live together in a particular. Area in a housing. Whether it's a house or an apartment or whatever. Given your proximity, and this is happening in municipalities and counties across the nation, I, I can tell you. When we submitted our text amendment, I probably looked at no less than 25. Different municipalities and how they handled this particular issue. Student housing. With respect to what we're seeking here in Emmitsburg is, we have a beautiful property, or it was, now is a beautiful property at 101, 105 West Main Street. But if you look at the history of this property, it was dilapidated, it was rundown. Going back to the early 2000s, Emmitsburg continued to cite this property owner for disrepair. Mr. Ott came to the property, and he put first-class, high-end renovations into the property. This. Property, because of its, the way it's configured and the way the bedrooms are, it became impractical to rent it just to regular families. And I note for the board's purpose that we're in the Village Zone District. We're not trying to create a blanket. Student housing zoning district for, for the entire town. We're talking about a very small sliver. Of the Village Zone area. In the Village Zone, you have things like. Doctors' offices, multifamily dwellings, schools, retail, medical centers. So this is not something that is going to create any more of an adverse impact in the zone. I'd like to also point out that the way the code is currently written. The Village Zone District allows for sororities and fraternities already to exist there. By special exception. So even though we're, we're, we're trying to clarify this code. If you look at what the code encompasses, the, the use that we're trying to achieve is no more of an impact than what's already in the zone. In terms of. Adaptively reusing this old building and in the Village Zone District, what we're looking at doing and what student housing does. In this area is to really revitalize. Older buildings. It provides affordable housing. older buildings. It provides affordable housing for students. It stimulates local economic growth. You have people living downtown and contributing to the businesses that are already downtown. It preserves the historical character of the buildings. And it stabilizes neighborhoods because you have people living there. And the thing that I want to emphasize too, when I'm talking about student housing, I heard the word transient being used by someone. Really not talking transients, the way you would think of someone just coming in and going, these are students that are living under a lease. So if there are concerns about, you know, you're not parking correctly, or you're not disposing of your waste trash correctly, or you're not using an appropriate bin correctly, or you're making too much noise. Anybody who has ever been involved in in the landlord-tenant rental, these are things that a landlord and Mr. Ott has done, is put into a lease. You have noise problems, that's a violation of your lease and you can be evicted. So there are mechanisms to control the people that are living in these buildings. So it's not just people coming and going. These are legal tenants. These are legal tenants that are obligated to terms under a lease that require those tenants to adhere to certain rules, regulations, and applicable laws, including the laws of this town. So when you look at what's going on, Mount St. Mary's has housing issues. A lot of the graduate students can't live on campus because most of those housing on campus is prescribed to undergraduate students. We are a town that is close in close proximity to a university that, you know, they need housing here. If we allow student housing within a specific zone, a zone that's including businesses and restaurants and lunch mats and medical offices and all these other things, then you're basically adding a compatible use to what is already there. And again, I emphasize, this has been going on for a long time. We're just the ones that got called out on it and why we're here today. In fact, at the planning commission meeting when we were here earlier in September, the question was, why are we even here and why are we even discussing this? Well, we're here and we're discussing it because the code hasn't adapted to the times. And we're trying to correct the code to come up to par with what other municipalities, counties, anybody that deals in in college towns has to deal with, given an archaic Supreme Court case that pretty much says only families can live together. So that's kind of why we're here. We're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to ensure that we can live in harmony with the town. We're trying to ensure that students have a place to live without being a nuisance or too much noise or too much garbage. We're trying to ensure that if you do have student housing, there's adequate parking. And we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to bring people to live in what was once a dilapidated building in downtown Emmitsburg and restore revitalization to the community. And we're trying to do that in a way that makes sense so that we're not adverse to the town, but that we're helping the town. So that, that's really why we're here and why the code needs to be adapted. And if you have questions of Mr. Ott, we can discuss what we actually did to the building as well.
I don't have specific questions regarding the housing, but I just want to clarify, I don't I don't feel like your statement about why we're here is correct. I feel like the reason why you're here is because there was a a violation in zoning and maybe a misrepresentation of how that property was going to be used. Am I correct in that?
I think that what probably happened was that the contractor filled out the applications and indicated that they were for single-family apartments. I don't think that they're, you know, based on our conversations and our meeting with Mr. Ott and his counsel, I don't believe that there was a deliberate intent to deceive the town.
Okay, so this is, as you would refer to it, a self-imposed issue because the paperwork was filled out incorrectly?
Well, the reason it came to the town's attention was because of the complaints regarding the car, because of complaints regarding cars and trash. And so that's why it came to the town. And then after investigation, the town determined that it was in fact being used for student housing, which is not a defined use within the code. And the reason the original zoning citation went out was in fact, was because of the the misstatements in the application for the use and occupancy permit. And Ms. Peoples is correct. This is not transient housing such as you would get in a rooming house or a boarding house. And both of those code definitions also, when you look at the parking requirements, contemplate an onsite owner of of the building. And that is not the case here.
Were there any inquiries from the town during this process whether or not this was going to be used as student housing before it came to fruition?
No.
I'm understanding that that's not correct.
No, the town was unaware that it was going to be used for student housing.
Correct. Unaware that it was going to be used, but I believe there was an inquiry and a question asked. It looks as if this may go towards student housing and the answer from the applicant was no. Am I correct?
Yeah, no, we did, we, we sent a letter putting them on notice that it was being used for student housing based on our, our investigation. It's not that a false representation was made that it or that any representation was made frankly, that it would be used for student housing.
Okay.
During the, during the building permit application process.
Okay, so that wasn't a, a direct question from town staff then, correct?
No, I mean, there's no reason they would ask. I mean, if somebody comes in with, you know, to get.
No, I'm just clarifying from what I understood.
Sure.
Previously, that's, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't tracking.
It's okay. There's a lot to track tonight.
And and I, with all due respect, I, I think the conundrum is that this has not been defined in the code, so it wasn't a specific question to ask because it's been this ambiguous use of property within the town for such a long time that I, I don't think it was ever directly suggested or directly misled. It just wasn't something contemplated until we realized there was this hole in the code that didn't allow it. I don't think anybody realized on our end that it was a, a non-permitted use. And I don't think the town knew to ask because again, the archaic nature of the code and, and how the code exists and doesn't really define it. We've been living in this gray area that there was never an intent to mislead. I don't think it just ever came up.
Right. It's never a problem until it's a problem. But you know, as I think Commissioner Turnquist can attest to, sometimes we realize that the code needs to be updated through situations like this. And I don't necessarily think anybody disagrees that we have a lot of changes that should be made in our code. There's, it's a huge project.
And I can attest through other municipalities, we come, we come to the same conclusion, realizing that when something comes up and the code doesn't properly address it, oh, we really need to fix it. It, it's what you're finding here is what I'm finding consistent across the board in terms of local and municipal regulations. It just happens.
Yeah, and I understand that short-term rentals initially came up before the board, I think a couple of years ago, what, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, somewhere in there? If I'm correct, I don't know if any. Two thousand nineteen. So it's there was no action taken from what I understood, but there was definitely looking back at meeting minutes, a need to clarify in our code what this looks like. And okay, at this time. I believe before I get into discussion, we'd have to turn it over to right, our public comment too as well.
Absolutely.
And then you'll have a chance to come back up if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Suzie Glass, did you want to come back up in, in regards to this? If you could once again state your name.
My name, can you hear me? My name is Susan Glass. I live at two thirty-nine North Seaton Avenue, which is in the village zone. I also am one of the owners of the Odd House Restaurant and the Odd House Building. There's a member, seven members of our Odd family that own lots of rentals in town. They have rentals above the building. That's like the whole first block that goes to the fire department. We've owned a building and the restaurant fifty years. No one has ever come and told me who I can rent to. No one has ever said, I can't rent to a student. I have rented to hundreds and hundreds of students. And no one has ever seen a thing. And if you walk down, down the sidewalk today in the village zone, you will find more than one house that holds students. People rent to who they want to rent to. I don't know even why the town would even think about coming and knocking on my door and saying, you can't rent to students. I would think it'd be a big discrimination problem there. I live in a very large home. I have eight bedrooms in my house. In my house, I've raised five children, but I've also had students live with me for twenty-five years. Sometimes up to four students. I never charged them. They were people that work for me or people needed a place to stay. We never bothered a neighborhood. You can tell Mr. Sweeney there, I'm sure he probably didn't know they're there. We park around back, but there's lots of variables in this community. There are lots of very large houses. There are lots of very small houses. There are senior citizens that run out of room because they have to. We're a very poor community. So if we have to get into all these stipulations and who you're renting to and who you shouldn't rent to, and the person down the street is going to have to say, oh, you can't live in my house because I, I just think we're just stepping on things we shouldn't be stepping on. I mean, it's, like I said, we've, I have rented to people in our, in the apartment buildings for fifty years. So where of all of a sudden is it's, I can't rent to a student, but I can rent to someone else? Or do I have to tell you who lives in my building or who am I? I mean, if I had to tell every time someone moved in and moved out of my apartment building, it would be ridiculous. It would be very burdensome. But I also want to address a complaint I heard her just say about Mr. Ott's building. And yes, we are related, but I'm also a neighbor. I have not seen that place filled up with trash at all, ever. I haven't seen, he has a parking area. There's lots of places. And listen, we all know what parking is like in Emmitsburg. Everyone has a problem parking. We all do. And it has got worse because there's more students. But we are also growing. The whole town is growing. You know, my, my customer base, because of the new developments, it's just fantastic. And I appreciate every bit of, appreciate every bit of it. But we just have to grow and we have to be what we are. There's things that can be done other ways, you know? Make sure that the people, you know, if I don't maintain my building or if there's problems in my buildings and the police come there all the time, that's my responsibility to take care of it. So if these people aren't taking care of their properties and they're not taking care of the noise, there's where your regulations should come in, not who you rent to. The building across the street that used to be Carousers, there's nineteen students that live there. I haven't heard one person say anything about the nineteen students that live there. You keep on going down the street, there's a house that's got six students. Up by my house, there's five students, five girls live in the house. No one's saying anything to them. So I just think you need to stand back and look at who we really are. We've always been a neighborhood of students. We've always been the college in our town. And we, in, in small, good, neighborly people. Maybe they're not too neighborly, maybe they need to learn. That's something we can teach them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Diane Walbrecker. Did you want to come up? Yes, thank you.
Diane Walbrecker, five thirty-five West Main Street. Originally, I wanted to talk about the comprehensive plan, but you guys at both ends of the table said it for me. I'm trying to help bring people to comment on the comprehensive plan, so thank you for that. And I didn't even realize this was going to come up about the student housing today, but I live in the village zone. I think that, and, and particularly as I'm looking at the goals, objectives, and strategies in the comprehensive plan, a lot of those strategies, the implementation of those is going to require updating of our code book. So I think this is a perfect opportunity to take a look at our codes and make sure that they allow the kind of diverse housing that we need in the village zone and perhaps other zones as well. I think our town needs to become more flexible in giving people the ability to create the kind of community that we want. And infill development and diverse housing is a, is a huge part of that. So I definitely support updating the code to match the comp plan, but also to address this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then our last one, Carrie, would you like to come up? Are you sure? Okay. All right, so at this point, before we move in for discussion, you have the opportunity to come back up if you would like. I mean, I don't know if there's really much to rebuttal from what you heard, but if you would like to come back up, you may. Sorry, you have to do that into the microphone. I do have a question if you don't have anything else.
I, I would like to say thank you to the people that understand that the archaic language of the code is really why we're here and not the use of, of the housing in the village zones or district that exists as it is today. But yes, if you have a question, President?
Yes, so I heard, obviously, we know that this is going on in the village zone as it is already. I get my, looking at some of the language where it got dicey was in the definitions. What is a multi-dwelling? What is multifamily? What is student housing? Who's related to who and all sorts of things? My question is, was this property you know, like self-contained apartments or are they bedrooms that are being rented out individually within? How, how does that look? I'll let Mr. Ott address that. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. First of all, the property when we bought it was actually one oh one, one oh three, one oh five. Right, so what we did was we had architects draw plans up professionally and we brought them down to the town. Right? And I'll rent it to anybody. It doesn't have to be student. I could rent it to the people on the board here, actually. I'm not targeting a certain person to rent to. But so we brought it down and we showed the town exactly what we had planned to do. Right? And I'm sure these people don't work here now, but so we all got together, even the, the people that work in the town, like Jimmy Click, a couple of those guys, we sat down and talked to them, right? Because I want to do it the correct way because I do like old houses and I put a lot of money into the house.
And they do look very nice.
Thank you. So, so anyways, uh, once we talked to the town, we talked to the county, they said, okay, we think the best thing is for you to, at this separation in the brick, make it two dwellings. So that's what we did. Not any certain intention one way or the other, right? So then as we progressed on, uh, we, you know, like the lady who works here, so we, we finished the, the actual building after we went through all the codes and did everything by the book. And then the, there was a misunderstanding between the county and the town that the town didn't have a copy of the approved final inspections. I didn't know that. I didn't realize that. Then, then he did find it in the email, right, from the county to the town. So then we proceeded to, to, to rent the building out. Not one way or the other. It doesn't really matter to me. I, I mean, I don't want my building being destroyed because, you know, the, the doors on the front are twenty thousand dollars apiece. Right? So I'm not there so that, so the kids destroy it. But I'm also a graduate of the Mount, right? I was raised here, a graduate of Mount St. Mary's. So I'm putting money back into this town. If the town doesn't want me to do that, I, I don't need to, to be honest with you. And the other problem I have with this whole situation is as the people said standing here, this has been going on here for, I lived in the town. I did this, I, I know, I rented, did the same thing. So I'm just kind of very confused about the situation. I'm one person and there's gotta be at least thirty houses that is the same situation and aren't even remotely close to the, as nice as the one that we created. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, but you didn't answer my question.
Oh, what was your question? I'm sorry, what?
How?
Yeah, so it's set up as a, as, um, uh, as a, a four-bedroom dwelling, right? And then a seven. So that, that.
Like four bedrooms on one, seven on the other.
Yeah, and there's a separation, well, two separate units. And originally, the house, if you go back historically, it was an eleven-bedroom house. Right, and then somewhere along the line, it changed, even before my time, where I was a kid, that was like the scary house to walk by, because when you walk from elementary school, you know, it was old, falling down, right? Uh, ma- maybe then it was one oh one, one oh three, and one oh five. That's how we bought it. It was three addresses at that time.
So it used to be one, turned to three, now it's two?
Correct. Yeah, and somebody was in there, you know, before my time, when we bought it, was kind of partially fixed a little bit, fallen down, and you know, things of that nature. So we did everything with the, we even updated the sewer line, I mean, with everything that, you know, we needed to do to make it legit.
Okay, so, um, you're renting out the bedrooms individually?
Correct, that we have leases.
Okay. Do you work with Mount St. Mary's at all as far as student housing?
I do, with the athletic program.
No, 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 I mean, um, as far as, is this, by coding it, and maybe this is a question for Leslie, I don't know if something coded as student housing, or maybe it's just allow, I don't know if we're looking for a designation of student housing house or just to allow student housing in general. But if something is coded student housing, does that then give any kind of, um, opportunities to work with the local college for lodging and into subsidies that way? You know what I mean? Like if they want to provide financial aid towards lodging, would that be something that would be then eligible because it's considered student housing?
That would be an issue for Mount St. Mary's. That's outside our purview. And, you know, or whomever's handing out grants or, you know, student assistance.
So it could be, we just don't know.
We have no idea.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't have any other questions.
I guess I'll follow up on that if that's okay, Amy.
Yes.
Are you receiving any economic benefit from Mount St. Mary's by renting to students at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions before we close and move towards discussion?
I would just like to add one, one thing, and I think Mr. Ott said it initially, but he wasn't incredibly clear at the beginning, but he didn't necessarily target students. But in terms of the configuration of the units, you, you might get a single family in there. Um, rarely do you have a single family rent a seven-bedroom apartment, unless they have a lot of children or whatever. So it, it's whatever the needs are at the time. Would Mr. Ott rent to a family? Absolutely. Is he targeting students exclusively? No. But we're here just to make sure that he's not violating any rules.
So if, um, somebody fresh out of college wanted to get away from mom and dad and just move down the street and rent a room, they could do that there?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and if somebody who's over fifty-five?
I don't think that's the case. Student housing, you have to be in a program, a secondary education. I think that's defined in the code. Do you want to confirm?
Yeah, yes, sure. The, um,
In our discussion?
The proposed definition of student housing requires that they be enrolled in a secondary, a post-secondary uh, program, whether it's a, you know, a professional certification process or if it's university or some other, you know, post, post-secondary school.
Okay.
So then he couldn't rent to anyone else but the students?
No. It's a use designated in the zone.
Right.
It's not a use that's specifically attached to the property.
Yes, it is. It would be, because his use in occupancy would be for, it would permit he gets would be for student housing.
Correct, but if we wanted, but if we wanted to change it to where it was regular apartments for a regular family, we could do that as well. I'm just letting you know that-
Either or.
Correct.
Yes, I would agree with that.
So all or nothing, but not both? Is that correct?
Either or.
Either or, okay. Okay. Any other comments before we close for discussion? No?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we are closing public comment and moving towards discussion. Do I need to hit the hammer? No. All right. So, for discussion. Anybody want to jump in first?
I'll jump in. Um, I just want to make the, the board clear, when it came to the planning commission, and we looked at the entire code, but as chairman of the planning commission, I made sure there was no discussion of current violations through the town and how would we handle those. This was about changes to the code only and how we'd accept them, not how we would deal with current violations.
Understood.
And I just wanted to say, I think as Ms. Powell indicated, we were deep in the weeds in some of the discussion. You know, we got back and forth and even definitions of trash cans.
Understood, because I spent about five hours on it on Sunday and finally ended up with a headache and decided to put it down. So I can understand and appreciate the work that you've done and thank you for, for doing that. Any other commissioners' thoughts?
Yes.
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 I got a few.
Commissioner Hoover.
So, and, and first let me say, it's not about renting to students. You are allowed to rent to students. That's, that's, that's not going to change either way, whatever happens here tonight or whenever. It's just a matter of the days about renting rooms versus an apartment or a house, I think it's, whatever it may be. And whether that's going on or not, I'm sure it probably does somewhere, but, but I'm not going to dispute that, but that's, that's the reason, that's, if we're not saying you can't rent to a student for this purpose of this draft that we have here, it's the purpose of renting rooms out. If you're going to do this type, it is my personal opinion, if you're doing a village zone, would be the right, is probably the best zone that it's going to happen in, um, I would think. Um, but, and I was glad to hear Mr. Ott say that he didn't care who he rented to, students or others or whatever, because I don't like the student housing title. Um, I find it to be discriminatory, that it's for students and students only. And I find it to become subjective as to who does get rented and who is going to be responsible for enforcing it. So if it's in the town ordinance, that really puts it on the town to enforce whether somebody's in school or not in school, or he or she's in a semester, out of semester, or whatever, and then who's going to enforce that person? If the neighboring person next door, in the next room, is unhappy with the person next door, who's not, is not, not doing what they think they should be doing, then that puts the town in an awkward position of dealing with the internals of that house, and I see it as more as a HOA agreement than I see it as a town ordinance. Um, so I don't like the definitions, I don't like the concern of student housing being named that way. Um, I'd had some discussion with staff and I, and I, and I, Leslie, I believe she talked to you, because I see some of those changes in here and I appreciate that. Um, to me, really, it's a boarding house is what you're trying to create. It's just changing the definition of boarding house versus adding student housing to it. And the boarding house, basically, the only difference is a boarding house, the current code says a boarding house includes meals. Um, a change that we have here says that it could be just housing or it could be housing and meals, which I think that leave that off. I think that may resolve the whole issue in the end. Um, so, like I said, my concern is highly only to be students that, that, I don't know, does that allow, uh, somebody that's, you know, somebody mine and Frank's age to go back to class and be a student in that house? You know, as, you know, if we wouldn't do that. If we're doing just online classes, are we still going to be considered as a, as a student? If I skip a semester this year, or this semester, skip, I'm in this semester, I skip next semester, with the intention of going back, do I have to be moved out or thrown? So I have a lot of concerns about the student housing and the requirements of that and whether, you know, the, um, post-secondary, I'm assuming that is intended to mean trade school or whatever school you're in, I'm assuming.
It would be any schooling after the completion of high school.
Yeah, um, but like I say, that's my assumption, and, and I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, but the next, the next go-around of commissioners or mayor or staff or town attorney or landlord may have a different assumption or opinion of that. Um, so, so that, that, that's what concerns me about that, is being student housing. So I would, if we're going to focus on it, I would rather see it be focused more on, I don't know if we call it boarding houses or what we call it, but we call it something just where it's, it catches it all. So maybe in the same house, you've got students and you've got, you know, a thirty-year-old person that just wants to live there, that's working, you know, down the street to grocery store or whatever, not, not going to school and, or what have you. Or, or somebody that's, is going to take classes online and he or she's got a full-time job. And also, that's, this is what they can afford. This is where they would go.
So, so let me just speak to one thing. The boarding house doesn't come contemplate, nor does the rooming house contemplate the use of common facilities, such as the kitchen, the bathrooms, and I guess it could contemplate bathrooms, but there's a kitchen area, there's a sitting room. And the, the use of the term student is not discriminatory. Um, under the, you know, as it's, as that term is interpreted by the, uh, either the Supreme Court of Maryland or the Supreme Court of the United States. It's not considered, um, a suspect class. I mean, some people may regard students as being a suspect class, but they, but they don't fall within the category of being, um, a targeted unit, if you will.
Thank you.
Can you explain that a little bit more? I'm sorry. Um, because if student housing does go through, from what I understood, you said it's an either or, but not mixed. So I think that maybe we're saying the same thing. The concern that Commissioner Hoover had is by stating student housing, you can't do an either or. I mean, by doing, uh, student housing, it has to be an either or. It, it can't be like, has to be all or nothing, correct?
Right, because if you go, if we go to student housing, and when an applicant selects, I'm going to turn my house into student, my, my, my multi-dwelling unit into student housing, then that's what they select on their permit. And then if they do that, and then you, then you try to turn around and say, well, I'm going to have, I'm not renting all my rooms, so I'm going to let somebody else rent those other rooms, then by permit, they would be wrong. The, the, the use in occupancy would be stated differently. The way, the way that this is being created. Not, not the way it's created in a bad way, I mean, but the way it's, the way it's drafted, you'd have multiple uses.
I, I think there's some, some, some confusion, which is completely understandable, but what we have here are two dwelling units. Okay, and a dwelling unit can be occupied by an individual, a family related by blood or marriage, or a group of people acting as a single household group or a single household unit. And what a single household unit is, the attributes of that are buying food together, cooking meals together, sharing expenses, having one lease. Um, and when you're renting individual rooms, it doesn't qualify as a family, because each of these students has his own or her own agenda, gets her own food, has her little, you know, cubicle in the fridge or whatever. And so it doesn't fall within the definition of a family. And so, so that's, I think, the, the genesis of some of the confusion regarding this. And as Ms. Peoples indicated, you know, the Supreme Court's spoken about, well, what is a family? And, and it defined it, and it didn't include a bunch of random people who decided to live together. And so what jurisdictions are doing is adopting regulations that pertain specifically to student housing. And so you also need to consider the attributes of students. So they're each going to have probably his or her own car, and they're going to be using it, which is why the parking requirements are more stringent for student housing than they would be for, you know, a bed and breakfast where people just show up. They got one car, they're in town for a short period of time, and you don't have the same amount of impact. And so that's sort of the genesis that the plan, that's what the planning commission worked through when it was considering these, as well as trying to deal with a couple other anomalies along the way that frankly, were causing you a headache. They were causing the planning commission a headache too, because, you know, there are defined terms that show up nowhere else in the code, like tourist home. I mean, that was an anomaly.
Correct, so if I was living in my house, I wanted to rent out one bedroom where I'd live there, I have an extra bedroom, and I want to rent it out to a college student, I could do that in the village zone.
I believe that you could, because that could qualify as a boarding house. Is that fair to say?
I'm sorry.
Well, actually, let me think about that.
Against what we've-
Yeah, I may, I may have misspoken.
If I, if I was living in my residence, in the village zone, I own a house and I have an extra bedroom, and I rented it to a college student, um, that wouldn't necessarily-
No, that would, that would constitute having someone living in the house that's not part of the family unit.
Which would not be permitted.
That is correct.
You can't have a student living with you unless you, your whole facility is student housing.
Oh my gosh.
Which has been happening since nineteen, in the nineteen sixties.
Yeah, I mean, what we got into with that was, you know, when you mentioned boarding houses, are there individual kitchen units, for example, or shared? So in your example, that would be a shared, so that's not a boarding house. So a boarding house wouldn't have that type of facility.
Understood.
Are, are we making this a little more complicated than we have to, because right now they're asking for student housing? If it comes a time where it's not student housing, then they can come back in for a change of occupancy, correct?
What happens is you, when you change the use of a particular building, you come in and you get a new, um, a new zoning certificate to document the change in use. That's how that works.
I did look at a, a, you know, Gettysburg to compare it to, since they are a local college town. Um, and they do use the definition of student housing. And there are a lot more protections in place for the town for that designation, which we currently really don't have any.
What do you mean protections?
Um, let me pull it out. So essentially, so it goes through and talks about uh, owner's duties versus duties of the occupants, you know, health and safety regulations, peace and enjoyment, residential use, disruptive conduct, um, and submitting an application to the town for the rental. And it, the way I see this is, it also asks them to do an inspection. So this was a way that we could, for those, not for our applicant here, who has a beautiful building, but we do have some properties in town that are being rented out in very substandard conditions. And there currently isn't anything in our code to allow us to do anything about that.
Yeah, there is, and you know, by, by the code, I can condemn a building. I'm not doing that. Because there is no backing. Uh, there is one property on Main Street that we've had the health department there, the animal control, fire marshal, building inspector, uh, just about anybody that works for the county that has anything to do with it, the place has fallen down. It's, if I had a choice, I would sleep in a dumpster before I would sleep in there. And they said, there's nothing we can do about it. So for me to, to, to stick my head out and say, I'm going to condemn a building and then not have anybody back me.
I, I don't think that's what this is saying.
There's just, there's-
It's not saying condemn a building. It's saying that they have to go through a rental inspection and pass it in order to get, um, a rental license within the town, and that's, that's a- which is another agenda item, and I kind of see them both going hand in hand, because we don't have anything like that.
Right, but here again, I don't know how much water that's going to hold, because we can't get anybody to, to help us with what we're, the, the, the problem properties we have now.
Correct, which is why Gettysburg put it in their code and put it back on the code enforcement officer to be able to um, look into something like that. Because otherwise, you're right, we have, the town has no recourse if we end up with somebody who's not going to maintain the property and the county's not going to do anything about it. Now, that's not saying that's everybody. It's going to be the, you know, one here and one there. But there really isn't anything, if this is, let's say, everybody goes the direction of, of student housing- Goes the direction of, of student housing, great, but there is no protections in here for us as a town. For us to fall back on, especially since there's nothing that the county is going to do.
Good, if, if we're going to do that, which I'm in favor of, we need to do it for all properties. To include student housing, not just. Student housing.
I agree. Yes, yes, I don't think it should be targeted. And I know that's a huge change, so I don't even know how.
It, it's part of the comprehensive plan, this is one of the discussion points in there. Is that we need to go down that road and enforce the housing codes. So we are discussing it at that level already, also.
Because I know Commissioner Hagan, as you were talking about, a lot of our subdivisions have things within their HOA. That have very strict rules on how. Whether or not your house can be rented as an Airbnb, or whether or not you can rent a room, or if you're going to be the. You know, not the primary resident there, that's all kind of dictated by the HOA. There's no HOA for the village zone, so. That's how. Unfortunately, we end up with a few dilapidated properties around town, and there's nothing we can do about it. So either way, no matter which way this goes, I feel like something needs to be in place. That gives the town more authority.
Yeah, one, one thing that you might want to think about is to. First of all, address the media problem with respect to student housing. And your point's very well taken with respect to inspections, because while this house doesn't pose an issue. You know, you don't want a house burning up with a bunch of people in it, it, it would be a disaster. And so perhaps what this board should do is focus. On the student housing issue within a direction to the planning commission to go back and just look at the code. And perhaps revamp. You know, and address these issues that you're raising as part of the comprehensive plan, because. I will say that when we were at the planning commission meeting, you know, we kind of got to the tourist home thing, and it was like, well, good grief. You know, this isn't anywhere else, but then it was like, well, we're in the process now of rewriting the entire. Definition section and, and the code, and that's not really what the applicant is asking us to focus on. You know, so I think that maybe we just deal with.
The student housing, so.
Yeah, and then.
Ms. Powell, let me ask you this, is there in any world. Where a house can have rooms rented to a college student and a non-college student at the same time and not be in violation of the code? Or does it?
It, it would go to whether, well, so you, no, because you look at dwelling, yeah, you like. You, you look at dwelling units and what the definition of a dwelling unit, and I think there's some confusion as to, you know, well, what does multifamily mean? Multifamily means that you got a bunch of apartments in one building. Alright, and so it doesn't mean you got a bunch of people in one house, it's completely different, and so. A single-family dwelling unit can only be occupied by. Whomever meets the definition of family, and because all these random students don't meet the definition of family. Therefore, it can't be rented to them. Now, if you have a family and they have a no pair, for example. That's, that's not going to be an issue as we've defined, I mean, the, the code used sort of an outdated, you know, expression for servants. And we changed that to, you know, paid household assistant.
Right, I saw that.
So, um. Sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought there, but. The answer is no, you can't just go randomly renting rooms unless you fall within the rooming house definition. Or the boarding house definition. And there is no definition for bread and breakfast, so.
Um, Commissioner Sweeney.
I don't know how you would be able to know who's running what room and where and how many, and if they were family or not.
Well, so, so this, so first of all, you know, our laws require voluntary. Observation and cooperation, otherwise the, and I think this is true for any municipality, and as you know, I represent other municipalities as well. And the process is in fact complaint-driven. That's, that's when people start to look.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's, and that's really all you can do, I mean, because you're not going to go banging on people's doors and saying, alright, everybody line up. You know, you're just not going to do that, and it would be totally inappropriate. So.
Okay. Commissioners. Thoughts, comments?
I, I have some notes I wanted to share. Um, I'm going to play devil's advocate, it's not against any, in, any particular individual, but. You know, I was thinking about what are the pros and cons of student housing, and I started searching the town website and the newspaper and so on and so forth. And what randomly struck me at every turn was, you know, the number of police reports. Uh, for destruction of town property and disorderly conduct issues. There's inconsistent enforcement, trash complaints, yard complaints, complaints about snow removal. Lawns being littered with beer bottles and condoms, and these all refer to students. Security concerns, noise complaints, property damage, parking issue, no owner or manager present. Does it affect the neighborhood character? Are we going to commercialize our residential district? Because if we're going to buy up, or if anyone wants to buy up homes and turn it into student housing for profit. Then we're looking at commercialization. You know, what about outside the village zone? I know there's at least one home in my neighborhood who rents to students. I don't have a problem with students. But I think these are issues that need to be addressed by an ordinance if they happen, what are the repercussions? The attorney said there, uh, is a lease for this property. And there's requirements there, in there about cars, trash, and noise in the lease, but yet there have been numerous complaints made to the town for that property. So how do we go about enforcing it? You know, are, are, there's many types of transient housing, some of those come with a lodging tax. Do we want our main, our entire Main Street to be bought up and turned into student housing? I think it's too, I think it's too strict to limit. Boarding houses or rooming houses to students or non-students. If you have a home and you're allowed to rent out rooms, it should be to whomever you want to rent to. To make it limited to students, for instance, this particular house, then that, um. Reduces the rental stock that's available to other young people, or, or even families, or, or single people moving into the neighborhood. They're not going to be available to rent those homes or rent those rooms. So I, I think limiting it to student housing only for a particular, particular residence. I don't, I don't think it serves, does a service to the homeowner, and I don't think it does a service to the town or renters in, in the area. I think it's going to affect our, our rental properties. So I think. I think we need to think more about the code and update our definitions and allow students versus. Non-students in either type of, of boarding house or boarding room or B and B, or. I think we could go further with our definitions, but I think we need to determine too, as a town. You know, what, what do we want Main Street to look like going forward?
Ms. Powell, the definitions that we use, is that tied? To same housing definition Bible in the sky? Right? Because we're, I mean, we're not just each municipality coming up with our own definition of what a, a dwelling is, correct?
There's consistency across the board.
So it's, okay, so that's where I'm feeling like the limitations are coming, because we're using definitions that. Are standard across the board.
Yeah, so, so if you look at the little chart that Nigella created, which I think is pretty helpful. I mean, boarding houses have a cap of five or fewer guests, and it's two per. And the parking requirements are two spaces for the primary dwelling, one for each guest room or boarding unit. I don't even know what a boarding unit is, but. And that's permitted in the village zone, a rooming house. Which. For compensation, and these are all for compensation, lodging is furnished to three or more, but not more. Than nine guests, and that's permitted in the VZ, B1, and B2 zones. And the parking requirements there are two spaces per primary dwelling unit, plus one for each guest room or boarding unit. The student housing. That was proffered would include one parking space, and these are off-site, I mean, off-street parking. One parking space per bedroom. Which actually gives the town more protection in terms of having, you know, a house full of people. That. You know, are all driving around.
How do, how are parking spaces even determined? Like doubling up, double parking one behind another? Or all.
Yeah, that, that can work. People are just going to have to move their cars around. I think that the town in the past has allowed. A parking lease, and I'm trying to remember the situation that was involved, but I think that the, the solution that was achieved there was that. A rental agreement with an adjacent property owner to provide the off-street parking was entered into. And that addressed that parking issue.
I mean, because that would be really hard to like police, or like, let's say, okay, they don't have off-street parking, all they have to do is buy a. Parking permit, and they can park on the street right now. I mean, but then at the same time.
But then that takes away parking spaces from your.
I agree.
Your commercial people, which is why you have these parking requirements for these different uses.
Exactly.
Parking wouldn't, that permit, that. Uh, wouldn't count as a parking spot, they can't, they can't buy a permit and use that as a parking.
Well, no, I mean, there's nothing that says that can't buy, you know, you.
Count towards parking for that building.
Right, so it has to be provided on, onsite, or as you've done in the past with a long-term agreement.
Right, yeah, the Lutheran Church does the one for the, uh, the big building on the, uh, the square. They do have a contract with them.
Um, I feel like, even though these are two separate ordinances, it's almost like they. Can or should.
They go together.
They go together.
Not as one ordinance, but they go together.
Correct, so.
They go hand in hand.
I mean, it could be something that, do we look at, you know, the rental ordinance?
Well, I, I think that the student housing thing is helping us accomplish the second ordinance. Because they're, they're, they're asking for a. Permit or a, a occupancy for student housing, so we're trying to figure out who is living where, and where do we have the students, student housing, so. In the second ordinance, so they're, they're committing and saying, hey, I want a permit for student housing, so we know who's going to be there. And when it comes a day they're not, then they'll come back and get that changed to say, hey, now we want to turn this into something different. The thing, the thing about boarding, uh, having a boarding house with the state of the country right now, we could be opening ourselves up to. I know I got to be careful. How do you, how do you say this? Well, you know, there, there are, there are people coming into the country looking for someplace to live. And I'm not sure that we want people coming in renting a room here and there to do that.
So the, the one thing I, and, and you're right, um, Madam Chair. With respect to these being related, um, suggestions, but one is absolutely a zoning ordinance, and the other is not.
Understood. So you had made an initial suggestion along the lines of, not suggestion, but an option to go back and look at the definitions. I mean, that is an option. I feel like we can sit here and nitpick the definitions.
Can you do it, can you do a workshop just on this thing? Have, do we have examples of other municipalities throughout the state, or even maybe, since we're close to Emmett, Pennsylvania? We can look at other Gettysburg or.
We've already.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Peoples did actually do a survey of. Other jurisdictions and student housing ordinances, and what was presented to us was as a result of her. I think investigation, she had previously testified that she'd looked at, you know, at least twenty-five other jurisdictions that had specific student housing. Ordinances. I mean, I think that with respect to the incident issue, if you, you know, look at the student housing request. And you, you know, you're certainly free to reject. Other portions of what were recommended, but we can't start really changing what was requested in the text amendment. But you could, you could even accept, if, if you so chose. You could accept what's been proposed here with the direction that the further work be done. To address the issues that you're concerned about, workshop it. It would have to go back to the planning commission, because for zoning regulations, it's a requirement. Planning commission could workshop it, then come up with another set of recommendations to this board. But the publication requirements do require that we accurately advertise. You know, what is being considered by this board, and we can't have a material deviation.
Understood. Commissioner Hoover.
Testimony, but I was going to give you guys this, and I can print it out and mail it to you, but this is, um. A whole article done by the American Planning Association on this topic that talks about other jurisdictions, and if you think it would be helpful, you're welcome to have it. And.
You may approach the bin. Thank you. Here, I'll pass that down to you. Thank you for providing that.
I would like for us to do, to do a workshop and invite Mrs. Peoples and Mr. Rock back for a workshop to discuss it and resolve it.
I am not prepared to approve it tonight, but you're right, I, I would like to have further discussion.
I just. Cause I have a lot of changes.
As, as, when it went to the planning commission as the chairman, I got a lot of leadway, we can, I consider this one bite at the apple. Do I think our zoning across the board is ideal? No, but we had a specific issue to address that issue, only it wasn't open to redo the entire zoning code. Now, I think as the board here, them here, that's what we would like to do, and I'm glad to hear that. But this is a specific instance with specific circumstances we addressed, and. You know, when it gets into the definitions, we can discuss the definitions, we had. Lengthy discussions on what's secondary, and I think I drove Ms. Powell crazy as I kept removing things from the definition. Or, you know, like trash cans and parking spaces, we entered all those definitions in boarding houses, and. We had definitions in zones that didn't exist in our code that we found, and so we went through. Pretty extensive discussion and what each definition was. Now, we can reject what the planning commission suggested those definitions be. And substitute something else, or we can go back and say. This is this particular instance, and a bite of the apple, but we want to go back to that apple and do other things.
I understand, and in the same vein, I don't want to push something through. And have it bite us in the butt, not just us, the town, but the property owners who are trying to do the right thing and. Come before and, and make sure the code is correct, so I, I don't want to rush the decision, I do think it's worth. Continued discussion through a workshop if it does not go to planning commission. Commissioner Hoover, what was your vision for that, specifically just a workshop amongst council and applicants?
Yes. Just have a discussion of what works and what doesn't, and, um, but, I mean. Because this word is now also has, as we said earlier, is it, it's, it's, it is the student housing, bringing, entering that into it as a new item. But then correcting a lot of, not a lot, but some.
Well, we, we took a crack at some of them, but quite on, but specifically those were outside the scope of the applicant's request, I mean, the applicant. Was only proposing the student housing definition and the, um. Criteria that would apply to student housing, and it may be that the. Board wants to address this in a two-part process. You could direct the Planning Commission to go back. And leave all the other definitions alone, simply make a recommendation with respect to the text amendment. Go through the advertisement process again, decide that one discrete issue, and then in the meantime. Really do a deep dive on your, your zoning code, because trust me, this isn't the only thing that needs to be addressed.
I agree. It's not the only thing that needs to be addressed. And it's not in the sense that we want to leave the property owner or the applicant in alert. I just want to make sure that it's done correctly. And not opening it up to something inadvertently that we're not anticipating because we don't have all the other domino pieces in effect. By moving forward with this now. So. There's, there's gotta be, like you said, Mayor Davis, maybe it's making it more complicated than it needs to be. But I feel like there's something that can be worked out further in a workshop. Yes, Commissioner, turn your quest.
Um, you know, I was just gonna say that, um, you know, I argued unsuccessfully at the Planning Commission meeting that. The homeowner wasn't in violation of the code. You know, if you look at the definitions of the boarding house, the rooming house, and there's even something called lodging houses. Which is one of two options under residential uses. So I don't think he was in violation to begin with, but I'm not the attorney, so I digress on that. But if we're gonna kind of try to clean this up and make it more succinct. Uh, I just want to make sure the property owner will not be held in some sort of violation status until this is resolved.
What you could do is. Determine that the ordinance would just, or that the enforcement. Be held in abeyance until such time as the board has the opportunity to review and. You know, take a decision on this.
Yeah, we should, yes, we should do that.
I agree. Does that need to be a motion? Is there a motion? Let's make an emotion, so it's official. Somebody go for it. I'm too tired to think, go for it. Microphone, please.
Just hold, hold enforcement in abeyance until such time as the board, the Planning Commission and board have had an opportunity to further review. The proposed text amendment and the, uh. Any applicable modifications to the law.
And I can make that as the motion to hold, to hold the enforcement in advance until yet. The council and the planning commission have both reviewed it and reviewed it with the applicant. And to resolve, to resolve the. Passing or of the ordinance or. Settle, to settle it.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion on that. All in favor, please say aye. So it looks like there will. There's a consensus to move forward without. A vote and that we will be coming back to this.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, having said that. Have to officially, I have to close. We voted to. We voted, yeah, we said aye, didn't we? Okay, goodness.
I, I just want to point out that every time we, we do this, we're costing us money and we're costing the applicant money, money who already did. A lot of work for us because of our.
So Frank, who's gonna police?
Our ordinances.
Who's gonna police it?
Nobody pleases anything now.
I don't think there's, Mr. Mayor, I do respectfully disagree that we're not costing it. Put the microphone on if we want to argue, please.
I'm not arguing, I'm, I'm expressing my opinion and like I say, we keep costing people money by not being able to make decisions.
How is this costing anybody money? We're not penalizing anybody. We're not kicking anybody out of their rooms.
Well, we have to pay our attorney, we have to come back and re-announce everything and re, and.
Yes.
And none of that's cheap. Mr. Ott has to pay again for his attorney for time. And, you know, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but. I just think this was a lot simpler than, than we made this. Our code needs to be updated. But we could have adopted this and then went back and updated the whole code.
We could have, yes. We could have, we chose not to.
Who's gonna enforce the next ordinance? We're gonna pump it up.
All right. The council has decided that we'll come back to the topic, Mr. Mayor. Okay, it is the consensus of the sport to do it right the first time. Okay. Moving on to. Agenda item number five for consideration, approval of the ordinance twenty-four dash ten. Amending Title Eight of the Town Code to establish a rental registration program in light of tonight's discussion already. I am. Recommending that we postpone this topic. For tonight. Or table it.
I think you might want to workshop it.
Can we do them both at the same time, potentially?
One has to go back to the Planning Commission, the rental application registration does not.
Okay. So my suggestion would be that we put this in with a, with a workshop versus hashing this out tonight. Yes. Comments?
I, I guess I'm too deeply involved from the Planning Commission to. You know, vote on this, cause I had considerable influence in creating it.
So, okay, understood. Is there a consensus among the board to bring this back for discussion at a workshop?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. I, I wanted to ask the attorney, does it require a public hearing?
This one doesn't.
It does not, even though it's semi-zoning? No, it's not zoning. It's not zoning, so it doesn't, I mean, obviously all your meetings are public.
Right.
But no, you don't have the advertise, the same advertising requirements that you do for the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Also, in light of the time, if it's, if the board concedes or if there's consensus, I'd like to move up agenda item number seven. Considering Ms. Shaw has been waiting patiently to present on the final item, and I would like to get her home to her child.
May I be excused? Well, I don't want to leave if you have more questions.
Um, I believe so.
Okay.
All right.
Do you need a vote on that last agenda item? To postpone it?
Wait, there was a consensus.
Or table it back. Okay, we did, okay, through consensus, okay.
Okay. All right, is there a consensus to allow Ms. Shaw to do number seven?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Shaw, your approval of change order number one, engineering services for the water clarifier project.
All right, good afternoon or good evening. This is agenda item number seven on page eighty-three in the agenda packet. And this is for the consideration of change order number one, um, engineering services for the water clarifier project. In summary, um, when, um, so the fee, the change order would be for a total of. Two hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars. And that includes, um, seventy-one thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars for additional, um, engineering services. That were needed to, um, for permitting, which the letter states on page eighty-five. There was more permitting that was needed and also there were some, um, change, changes that were needed with the stormwater management requirements for the project. And then there would be a hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars for a resident product. And, um, resident project representative, that's an inspector for the project. Um, when we bid the project several years ago, we did not include an inspector, um, per the recommendation of the USDA. Because we, um, we wouldn't know how many hours would be needed for the project. And so they recommended just, um, asking for the hourly rate of an inspector in, in the bid packet, which is what we did. And so, um, as you can see what I noted under the explanation on page eighty-four. And their R and K, and R, R K and K's bid. They said a hundred two, a hundred and two dollars an hour for an inspector. This fee amendment is for slightly less at ninety-five an hour. Um, it should also be noted that the amount listed for the inspector, um, is a conservative estimate depending on weather and other factors. The engineering company believes the hours needed will be more appropriately about a thousand forty, um. Which would be about forty-three thousand dollars less than the amount listed, um, for part B of the change order. Um, for a cost of a hundred eleven or one hundred and eleven thousand eight, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. And they will bill us for the actual hours and mileage used. So we are requesting an approval of the change order, um, in the total amount of the four sixty-nine, five nineteen. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Yes, that's the amount after the amendment, um, it's the two twenty-six, three nineteen, thank you.
Two twenty-six, three nineteen. Okay. Um, questions or comments?
Where are we getting the money from? We didn't have a budget for this.
Correct, so, um, all the projects that we have listed in your CIP. Don't all end at the same time. The clarifiers do to end in October of twenty-twenty-six, which will be next budget year. So right now you do have the funds to put towards the water clarifier. Some adjustments might have to be made to the CIP or other considerations are gonna have to be taken in, you know. Or we'll have to take other things into consideration, planning the CIP budget going forward.
But this is, so what I'm hearing, this is doable, it's just a matter of scheduling.
Right, this is doable, you, you do have the money, um, now, uh, as opposed or because of some other projects that may or may not. Um, be completed. One of them that was included in your CIP was the water meter upgrade project. So, um, with that being said, that will probably have to be put on the back burner. But you will have to just look at the CIP to see where you are, um, with your water fund.
Understood, thank you.
All of the ARPA funds have already been allocated. We didn't have any leftover.
No, we actually have allocated everything in ARPA, um, majority of it going to the clarifier. Roughly about two point one million, I think, of ARPA was going to the clarifier and then the remaining went, um, to other projects.
Okay. All right.
How did we miss the cost by? It's doubling here.
We didn't. So when the RFP went out for the engineering services, we asked for the hourly rate because we did not know. The entire scope of the project, how many hours are gonna be needed for the construction. So at the recommendation of USDA, we bid it out, it is an hourly rate. Now that the design is completed and the project's gone out to construction bid and a contractor's been awarded, now we know a. Better idea of the amount of hours are gonna be required to complete the construction phase and the inspection phase of the project.
And it also looks like that Frederick County also added additional requirements onto this that we didn't take into account.
That is correct.
So it was like county mandates on top of.
Correct, that's exactly what happened with the pump station. The, the increased cost of the pump station was due to county. Regulations and mandates and the same thing happened with the clarifier.
Sure, because once you add in these other mandates, of course, the number of hours and stuff are gonna go up, it just escalates.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like, um, the resident inspector fee of a hundred and fifty-four thousand. I'm confused, was it part of the RFP or not? Because it sounds like from the letter from R K and K that it wasn't part of their proposal.
So during the RFP, we just requested an hourly rate for an RPR. And their hourly rate was a hundred and two dollars an hour in their original bid. Since this amendment's come out and we know how many hours they anticipate spending, they adjusted their fee to ninety-five dollars an hour. So they reduced what their hourly rate was gonna be. Now, this, this, um. As I explain, as Matt explained, this is hopefully worst-case scenario on how much it's gonna cost. Uh, realistically, we're hoping it'll be about forty thousand dollars less in, um, engineering fees, but. Until you get into the project, as we saw with the pump station with the, the concrete structure in the ground that added. You just don't know until you get into it. So I think that's why the estimate's a little high.
Additional questions? Okay. Is there a. Motion. To approve the change order.
I make a motion to approve the change order for two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars for R K and K.
For the water clarifier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five to zero. And then, last but not least. Number six. For consideration, approval of bid for MDE groundwater appropriation permit support.
Hi, so the bid you have in front of you, its purpose is to get a consultant to assist the town with analyzing. Its water usage and, uh, work to increase water capacity. Uh, this is an, uh, important project since there are multiple projects in the development pipeline. So there are two phases of this project. Uh, the first involves reviewing current usage data and project. And project, uh, future demand. And the second phase is to, uh, provide technical and admin support for Maryland Department of Environment. Permits to acquire more taps. So, uh, we've received two bids, one from Arrow Consulting for twenty-three thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. And the second one is from Barkan and Judas for forty-four thousand dollars with, so that, uh, low bidder is Arrow. Um, I've also provided, uh, two, uh, emails from, um, the references. One for Barkan and Judas and the other one for Arrow.
Can you explain what the first phase again, I'm sorry, was looking at?
Oh, so it's basically taking, uh, the water usage, current water usage and analyzing. Our, um, current capacity and, uh, kind of predicting what our, uh, projected use would be. If we have, um, developments coming up.
So they'll look at, um, the capacity of the water treatment plant, the capacity of each of our wells. Uh, look at the possible usage of the wells that are not online yet. And then they'll look at projected future, uh, growth that the town is gonna need. And, and see if we can then, the second phase is, is, as Nageria stated, would be to reach out to MBE. Because we're restricted on our appropriations on how much we can pull from the lakes and the five wells. And then they would work through that process to see if we have any increase in capacity that we already have that we're just not using. But then we also are limited somewhat on our capacity for what the water treatment plant can. Provide, and they also will give us options for the future best cases on how we should proceed. If we need increased capacity.
Will this be coming out of the water fund?
Yes.
Should it not be coming out of general fund?
It's your MDE groundwater, it's water.
So is, we're only doing this in anticipation of additional development?
Not only that, you're, you're, so MDE basically says, once you hit the eighty percent mark on your water tap usage. You need to begin planning for additional capacity.
So are we at eighty percent? I'm sorry, did I miss that?
I didn't do the calculate, we are at eighty percent. I didn't do the calculation, we are at eighty percent, yeah, we are at eighty percent with, with only, what, a hundred and the water? Yeah, so we are at the eighty percent of what we've used already.
So this is required when we hit eighty percent that we need to?
Well, this is. This isn't a required step, but this is going to give you, the board. The, the data and the information you're going to need to make the decisions on how you want to proceed for the future. Do you want to build another water treatment plant, do you want to look for more wells, you want to look for other reservoirs, you want to investigate storage tanks? What, when these other developments come in? What is their share of the pie? What, what do we want to ask them for? Because when they come in and they're annexed, you can ask for a lot of things. So it's, it's the town going to be prepared for the future, I think. This is a crucial project, I believe.
I agree. It gives us a lot for planning in the future.
We can't, can, can we ask developers to pay for it?
You can, oh, for this?
Do you have a developer? You need a new one, not, 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 not one of yours that's already got a, an approved plot plan.
Yeah, I think we could ask developers to reimburse us for this at some point in the future and build into the cost for them, but development is coming is. We can get ahead of it in any step to where we want to be.
That I understand. So this will give us direction on.
When and if we need to build.
When and if.
A new plant or grow additional, rather I should say, an additional plant or get additional wells online.
Okay, so.
And where, and where would they bid and how much would they cost? And there's.
But it's also to tell us if we can increase capacity now without doing any of those things.
Okay.
Also.
And is this, do you know how long something like this typically, okay, let's say we award contract or move forward, how long it takes, is this going to be a quick?
It should be about six months.
Six months?
Yes.
Do you think that'll be before we have major development?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
Because the annexation, you're going to need annexation for major development.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and the town manager is exactly, is definitely right, when they, when they want to be annexed. You don't have to ask them just for
Sure.
Small things.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, comments?
Guess I'll state my objection. I'm so opposed to taking this cost out of the water fund. You know, we haven't come back to the table to review the water rate increase. You know, we just talked about the status of our, our SIP fund for water and how bleak it looks. We, we currently know what our tap. What our available tap situation is and what we can handle in terms of developments. You know, being able to increase our supply and demand to support those developments increases the town's tax base tremendously. So I think this charge would be appropriate for the general fund. In my opinion. That's all.
I disagree. This is absolutely a water fund cost. This is, this is, this is for us to develop and the availability of our water or the lack of our water. This is a hundred percent, in my opinion, is a hundred percent water fund cost. As an enterprise fund, we shouldn't be subsidizing the water fund from tax dollars.
But this is to increase taxes that come into the town.
No, it's going to be.
Overall, it will, but it's to, it's to to justify or verify the, the, the volume of water that we have or will have or need to get. But it will, ultimately it will increase taxes, I agree with that, but I still, I still believe that it's absolutely a hundred percent a water fund cost.
Additional comments? Questions? Commissioner?
I guess while, I will agree that I'm proud of taking money out of the water fund. But if we agree that we are going to make developers pay dollar for dollar what we take to do this out and future developments, say a fraily farm is developed, they're going to cover this cost that we're going to recoup it.
No doubt. I mean, I, I don't know if you're going to cover this exact, go back and say we went to this twenty-three thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars, but somehow, some way, but this is going to tell us what it, what it, what a tap really costs us. What does it cost for that two hundred fifty gallons of?
Right, I just don't want to.
Of added resource.
Yeah, I'd also want to give it away to developers.
I agree with that.
That we have, I want to make sure this is something that's, hey, we need it.
I agree.
When it comes back to annexation or whatever, then we'll be, you know, we'll be here for that, but also establishing the, the correct, the correct tap fees that we need to be, this should help us do that if it doesn't already do it for us in the end.
So this makes a lot more sense with the explanation that you provided, thank you. The background was helpful. It. I do feel after hearing the explanation that we need to know what's, what, what we're looking at, what, so we have been arguing over what are water taps? How much does it cost, how do we figure that out? And if this is going to answer all of that, correct?
It's going to help, I think it's going to, I don't know if it'll answer everything, but it'll certainly help, could us in a, in a situation to get the answers or the, or the values that we need. That would explain, you know, what it, what it costs to increase capacity by, by the tap.
Okay, and then.
Agree?
Miss town staff. When they go forward with this, do they have specific things that we direct them to look at as part of this, or they just have a protocol that they look at?
So they have an extensive history of doing this exact project for many municipalities. So we would have an initial kickoff meeting for them to outline step by step what they're going to do. This is the same company that's doing our lead line service inventory. And the work they do, it's impressive, they, they have their ducks in a row. And so that's what would happen, they would outline step by step what their process will be.
Didn't they build the water plant?
The first one, or yeah, the one, yes. Current one, yes.
Okay.
They built that one, they built the plant we currently have.
Okay. Okay. And for, for that reason, I see it as a necessity. Any, is there any further discussion? Would you, is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept Arrow Consulting Corporation for twenty-three thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. MDE groundwater appropriation permit support.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan, any further discussion or questions?
Yes, um. Are we not having them evaluate our, our sewer capacity?
No, our sewer capacity, we are in very good shape with our sewer capacity. Even with any proposed developments that have come across the board, we are very good. That's what that, why that plant was designed at such a high capacity.
Commissioner, turn request, any other questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Alright. Setting the agenda for August twenty, no, October, gosh, October twenty-second. I believe we have three things already.
Right, so for the October twenty-second meeting, you would have for consideration, approve or deny change order number four. It's a building delay for the Creamery Road Pump Station Project. Number two, for consideration, approval or deny change order number five, a critical equipment delay for the Creamery Road Pump Station Project. And number three, for discussion, payment plan option for water and sewer connection fees for Christ Community Church.
Okay.
And that has to be an actual town meeting because they're all action item, or that number three is not an action item, but number one and number two are.
Right, that's not just a workshop, this is more voting on things, understood. I know we had a couple different things that we wanted to come back to, to get back on agendas, I don't know necessarily for October. But we will be setting another agenda as of October twenty-second, so we can discuss then, I would imagine for November.
Okay, I do have November, what staff has for November.
Oh, okay, let's have it.
Just add, so for number, uh, November fourth, for consent agenda would be for consideration approval of proclamation for MML Municipal Government Works Month. And then I have four items, number one would be for consideration, approve or reject the request from Mr. Robert A. Fritz, Jr. To acquire a right of way through the town's property on Hampton Valley Road. Number two would be the community development block grant public hearing to provide information on the progress of the DePaul Street Waterline Replacement Project. Which is in a requirement of the grant. For number four, three, for consideration, approval of bid for the town of Emmitsburg Sewer Line Camera Project. And then the last one would be presentation on the town of Emmitsburg Comprehensive Plan. And then if you want to add anything now or after the October twenty-second meeting.
Did we want to circle back to the water rate that we talked about at the workshop?
Yes, I would like to finalize that or, or whatever, yes.
Do you want?
November, I'm not going to be here in October. October twenty-second, October twenty-second, whatever it is.
So you're not going to, yeah, you're not, so you're not going to be here October twenty-second, so you're for, to bring it back on to November fourth meeting?
If everybody's good with that, yeah.
Is there consensus? Commissioner, turn request. Yeah, how long is the conference? Jeez, and Jill, can you, can you give us, no, I'm kidding. Yeah, just so we know.
Can be a long night, again.
Forty-five minutes, hour?
Can we do it at a second meeting in, in November? I know I've requested additional, sorry.
Additional information. I don't know how much time the town will need to pull that together.
What else did you have for November?
I, if there was an additional information request, I don't have that, I only have getting the capacity adjustment factor for tap fees.
Well, that we have to come back, but.
Right.
Do you want me to email it to you?
Sure. Yes, please.
The comp is the really big thing there, really.
For, yeah.
I don't know what the camera project is, but.
That was in your CIP for sewer. Instead of just picking line, we picked one smaller line, a sewer line. But since one of the goals is to reduce the I and I, we want to camera our sewer lines so that we can then get a plan together on which one should be relined in what order, kind of like what we do with the leak detection specialist. He tells us what areas we need to replace and repair water lines, this will help with the sewer. That's what that is.
So that's you bringing a recommendation, really?
I will, yes.
Okay.
Making the eleven-four meeting might be an issue for me, I may be having surgery on that date. That's why I suggested maybe we could do it at a second meeting in November, but whatever you think.
I think the mayor's going to be missing too.
Water rates at a second meeting.
Did you say the mayor is missing?
He won't be here November fourth, correct?
We want a full council for water rates. Right. Okay. Alright, so. Is there a consensus then to leave water rates on for November fourth?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Not that we have to decide this tonight, but there was a request earlier, a couple months ago, and it kind of got pushed and pushed for Mr. Castile for the Civil War Monument. There were two commissioners who said that they were willing to bring that forward to workshop, and I'm not saying that's a priority right now. But if that's something we want to move forward with, it would be nice to at least give him a month of when we can expect that. Or if there's a consensus to not hold a workshop. Because I believe it was back in when was it? August or a long time ago that we were trying to figure out, did we want to meet with a workshop and there were two commissioners who said, yes, I'm in agreement, including me, so do we honor that, or are we saying, no, not at this time, I just need direction for this poor man who's been asking every month?
If we agree to it, I think you're obligated to do it, so.
Well.
But I would wait till, I would wait till January.
Okay.
Or January or later, but I would at least wait till January.
Okay, alright. Consensus for after the new year, okay, alright, thank you. Any other? Is there a motion to accept the agenda for October twenty-second and November fourth with the addition of the water?
I'm sorry, did you, did you make a decision on the water rates?
Yeah, we were going to move forward with it on November fourth.
What? Okay. Discussion, vote? I need.
Both. Both. Can I, can I, can I? Can I get with you after, not, not tonight, but on this, the workshop we had, it was, what I was, what I'm talking about now. So the, the discussion we had at the workshop is where I'm hoping we go towards. As far as the rates.
I think that's to BD, TBD.
Okay.
Yeah, so it can't be, so the vote on the water rate.
So the discussion.
You have, yeah, you have advertising requirements and public hearings, that's, that's the only reason I'm asking. So if it's a discussion for direction, then you most certainly can do it at the November fourth meeting?
I think it's, if it's TBD, then I think it's discussion then.
Discussion?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. Alright. Are we good to vote on the agendas as presented? Would somebody like to please make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda for October twenty-second as well as November fourth as, as presented tonight. A second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Can't imagine that there's further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at nine forty-eight PM.